The Board of Appeals will now come to order, and thank you for being so patient. Please call the roll. Mr. Mendez?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. DeSorna?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Callen?
Present.
Ms. Cullen?
Present.
Motion to accept the minutes on the last regular meeting of June 6th. Who made the motion? Motion made by Richard. (laughing) Mr. Woods. Seconded by Mr. Callen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First case will be number 9788, continued case, 9999 and a half, High Rock Street. To allow conversion of an 62-family residential building in zoning District R2 into a three-family residential dwelling with less than the required area, 5,325 square feet, and frontage 54.50, exceeding lot coverage 42 percent, and having fewer than six parking spaces required by Section 9 of the Zone Ordinance. I understand that the gentleman is not here because he went on vacation in Puerto Rico, and I don't know if he's delayed by plane or what happened, Mr. Gasol.
He was in Florida vacation, he was back today, and decided to send back all of my two files from FIS. He was a fulfillment of his past duty.
Well, the problem that we have is we need a waiver in order to continue this if we wanted to, and he's not here to sign a waiver, and you don't have any authorization to sign a waiver. So...
What is the time period?
He could continue with, yeah, some kind of authority to sign a waiver. There's no, he has to do that. You don't have any authority to sign for him.
And the 100Js is up here?
Well, I do have from him. They have the authority to do it, but I don't have, not waiting for them. I have the authority right now.
Well, I'm saying that even if you're a patient that you were representing, I'm gonna stand up and say that.
It does say he's the representative, so maybe he can do it like the others do.
Well, it does say on here that it's petition of Louis Louis, but Representative Mr. David Gas.
And I've sent you emails to him.
Has he made any accommodations? Do you have any information? We asked him to bring it.
Kip would not assign parking to him. The parking there at Kip is open. There's no gate or anything to prohibit people from parking at Kip, but they wouldn't assign it to an individual.
So you had parking, any parking solutions at all in the past month?
No.
Have you had any plans done for the renovation of the property? Any plans on doing it? Any of that stuff done that you know about?
No, he isn't. He's waiting to see if he could get permanent for that unit. Is that what you mean?
How's he gonna get approval if we can't see what he wants to do? Everybody else brings the information to us for approval.
He wants to restore. He took the stove out, so it can't be used as an apartment, obviously, but he can put the stove back in and make, it's a beautiful apartment, as you saw. But he, uh, he's not gonna make any real changes. He painted, et cetera, but he's waiting to hear your approval.
But the problem is, he has no parking.
No, I don't have a plan.
So basically, he doesn't, he really just took everything that we said last month and just doesn't really matter to him, right? Is that what you're saying?
After Madison, because we talked with the head of Kip.
And they said no.
And he said, no, we can't assign it. They met with the attorney, they can't assign any parking there, but it's been there, you know. I know people who grew up in that house 30, 40 years ago, and there was never a parking issue, so, uh, but he tried that, and there's no changes to the apartment itself. He's gonna, he's gonna make no changes to it.
Just because, just because people have done it for 20 years long, doesn't mean we're gonna give you the nod to continue to work long.
It's so congested up here. And he has, you know, a driveway, and there have to be all these stacked cars parked, and you know that's not gonna happen. They're all gonna be looking for parking on the street. And that's why he said he had no problem getting a letter from Kip's, and he's had two months to get a letter, so...
All I'm saying is that there's two parking spaces there, but all I'm saying is that he would like, hopefully, to have a variance on the parking so that they could use the apartment. There's a desperate need for housing in Lynn, as we know. 100 percent occupancy. People need housing. It's a beautiful apartment, so he would like to see a variance on the parking so that they could use it as an apartment.
How do I know it's a beautiful apartment? Do you have any drawings? Do you have any sketches? Do you have any photos? Do you have any?
Not a plan.
You visited the par- you saw the par- apartment, correct?
No.
I thought you went to see it.
I did.
I did.
Still, in all, whether we hunt it or not, it's supposed to have a plan of the apartment. We made that crystal clear to them, and now it's down. If you had a plan written, as he has made, then maybe we could talk about it.
There's six other cases that are gonna stand up in front of us tonight, and if we let you go without that stuff, who's to say the other six aren't gonna have that same excuse?
Mary, what is the 100J date?
It's August 16th. Our next meeting is August 15th.
There you go.
When's the next meeting?
You know, we could, we could, I'll tell you, if you want, because it might not even be a form.
If he doesn't have a...
It might not even be a form, and I have it all.
He doesn't have a parking. I'm not going, so we're doing this for nothing.
Yes. Madam Chairwoman, I agree with you. I would say that we prepare to vote on it tonight.
Yes.
What is the wish of the board?
Motion to deny.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. DeSorna, seconded by Mr. Cole, to deny. Please call the roll. Mr. Wood?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. DeSorna?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Cullen?
Yes, to deny.
I know he's a good friend of yours, David, but I hope you understand. Next continued case, 77 Hawthorne Street, case number 9789. Ed B. Artisoli, right, his attorney Samuel A. Vitale. Decision on a petition to allow construction of a two-family house on property zoned R2 general residence district on a lot having less than the minimum required area, 9,272 square feet, and less than minimum required frontage 50 feet.
My attorney Vitale, this is Artisoli. This is Oswald James. We were here in June. We submitted a plan, and there were two proposals. James elected to go with the proposal that New England Homes and Doug Hyde made to him with respect to building it as a modular. And we have a plan that New England Homes prepared. They don't, it's not one they took off the shelf. They had to make this plan and would make the house to the specifications that we gave them. I think the concern was where the front door was, and they brought and prepared a front elevation. This house is essentially what you see on Liberty Street. Doug Hyde built four of them. They're each 16 feet wide, so the duplex would be 32 feet wide across the front. And then the floor plan they provided were the first and second floor, and with a kitchen on the first floor and a dining area there, and a living area, a bedroom, and then on the second floor, bedroom, and the bathroom. So that if the board would approve this plan, Mr. Hyde would be the individual who will see it as Atlantic Management, that's his company. And he's had dealings with New England Homes that have been very rewarding with respect to the homes that were built over on Liberty Street. And when James looked at the various proposals that people had given him, he elected to go with this one. I think the board's concern was whether the house would be in sideways and longwise, and this house is 32 feet wide, and the footprint we show, I think, is 34. It is 44 feet long, but the front doors are clearly on the street side and set back as Mr. Reed chose of his plan. Parking is at the rear, and by choosing a smaller home, it leaves much more open space and yard area, as reflected on the Reed plan. It provides for the three parking spaces at the rear, and I think it fits the lot. And I think it meets and addresses the board's concern that the front doors be facing towards the street and front end on Hawthorne Street.
What year did you purchase the three-family that burned?
That should be 2001. 2009.
2001?
One or two.
2001?
Somewhere there.
Had you lived in that house?
Yes. Used to live in that for me.
And what's taken you so long to build?
We were a little concerned as to what building and construction. I needed some communication with the board.
Could you speak a little louder, because I don't know what you're saying?
We were a little naive as to what we should do, you know?
They want a home on the street.
Yeah.
They live on the street now.
So we've been living on that street for over 15 years. We have a single-family home, and we have a three-family home on that same street. So we were a little concerned as to what we are going to do with this three-family home type of thing. And then we were concerned, so we just let it go until now, but we're fed now that we are capable of review.
And I explained to them that they no longer could have a three-family home because the zoning is act two. And when the building was burned and not rebuilt, they had a problem with the insurance, but ultimately, they resolved that. But when the building was, unless you built back within a year of a conflagration of a fire, you can't have that. So that's why they proposed to build a two-family. There are two families in the neighborhood. It's a 9,000 square foot lot, and they've owned this, yeah, 2003, they've owned the lot.
So you own the house, you're gonna build it on the street.
Right.
And now you're gonna build a two-family, hopefully, and you're gonna sell it?
No, we're not gonna sell it.
We can build a duplex, right?
How do you know that?
We can build, it's gonna be a duplex. Are you gonna rent them? You're not selling them?
So, Mr. Hyde, you're on duty.
Why does it have to be a duplex? Why can't it just be a two-family? Just asking.
duplex is a two-family.
I mean, a regular two-family, not a duplex, up and down. First floor, single-family, second floor.
No, we wanted it to play because it's not a fit.
That was what they want. It fits.
Just ask.
They got two different plans. They elected to go with the smaller plan, and I think in fact...
And it's mom ordered it.
If you, if you, the success of people in building Lynn Lynn is not in building one floor and then two floors, it's building duplexes. Fairmont Ave has now got maybe 10 or 12. There are four on Liberty Street. People's tastes have changed. The building has changed, and this is a lot, this fits on the lot. As I say, he elected to get ultimately a smaller duplex.
You know, I'm looking at the floor plan for the first floor. It's got one living room, a little kitchen area, and then a bedroom.
You asked him to sign.
I mean, you know, I understand he's probably looking to maximize and renting his three-bedroom, three-bedroom units, but that's not a quality of life situation, the way I'm looking at this thing. There's no dining area or...
There is a dining area, but a kitchen.
I see the kitchen.
These are the same units that Doug Hyde built, okay?
I didn't know, I don't know what Doug built.
Yeah, well, I'm just...
So I don't know. I have no idea.
Well, I'm just saying, the reason it says Atlantic Management, these are the units that he...
Yeah, but, yeah, but that doesn't mean he called this a bedroom. Yeah, you could build this unit. What I'm saying to you, it'd be nice if it was a two-bedroom unit with a living area and a den or a dining room on the deck. This is where the deck is going right here. Instead, these are just being built for rental property. Nothing wrong with that, but it certainly, it could, it could, it could be a better quality of life than what I'm seeing here in this plan. That's all I'm saying.
If we had had and put the building in sideways, we'd have a longer building, and but we understood that the board wanted it to face to the street. When you do that, and you want access and sideline, and you want to provide space between this building and the others, so it was a choice.
You only like, you like a building that fits in with the neighborhood, that adds to the character of the neighborhood. You got two, nice two and a half houses on either side of it, and we didn't want something jammed in sideways. Because you know what? That's not fair to the people that are, that are living there. I would imagine this was probably, the house that you had there was probably a triple, a three-story, conventional, exactly.
Right.
But I'm just saying, that, that, from an aesthetic point of view, probably, probably blent in with that neighborhood up here, because it's a multi, multi-family neighborhood.
He would have loved to build a three-family.
Yeah, he could.
He could build a three-family.
But I'm, I'm just saying.
They lost the life to build a three-family.
I'm just not that happy with it.
So they wanted to build a two-family, and they wanted to build a two-family without covering the entire lot and providing a sufficient sideline on either side.
Right, yeah.
So once you take the width of the lot, and you take, you picked essentially the smallest, width 32 feet, 16 and 16, that then put the building longer along the sidelines, but shorter at the front. The other plan, if you recall, was longer along the side, and the concern was that the doorways went out not to the street.
You know, I'm looking at the building here. It has a flat front face. There's no overhangs, there's, there's no little above the doors.
All of that can be...
Oh, I'm just saying. This, this, this does nothing for me. This is a basic, all right, I got these plans from Doug Hyde, and I don't show any...
No, it's from New England Homes.
Any original character here. It's, and I knew it was a, I knew it was a modular the minute, because we saw this before, another modular is you can't, you can't put the door in the middle of a modular. But, and that's okay. I got nothing against modulators. But I'm saying, this really does nothing for me. It looks like it's gonna be rental property.
I've never seen a duplex. Come in here, it's, it's, it's all tight.
Excuse me?
It's very tight. This duplex, this layout...
Because we tried to...
I know you tried, but I understand, I know you're doing that. But to me, it's, it just doesn't have the width and the room in there.
Well, if we go with width, then we may not have...
You know, it's like staying within a duplex, you know, where it doesn't belong.
If we change the footprint in terms of the width, we're gonna have a problem and need a variance for sideline.
I understand all that.
Yeah.
And so we wanted to put the parking at the rear, and given the topography of the lot, we didn't want to put a garage under. So to me, there are trade-offs. So to get, to get access to the parking at the rear, we had to have it with sufficient for a drive and get the parking at the rear. We wanted to leave enough sufficient space for green space at the rear, which we did. And so it was balancing all of those in terms of, but it once was a three, it was pre-existing non-conformity, it got destroyed in a fire. And so it's not, multi-families are not, not in keeping with the character of that area. There are other multi-families. And James isn't a developer, that's why he went to people who are professional, and he lives on the street, and he lived in the very house that was on that lot.
Yeah, but when all that was laid out years ago, before, so in 1926, you could put that anywhere, it was willy-nilly, yeah. You know, the city decided we gotta go to a, some kind of a party, a housing area that blends in well with each other's neighbors. So that's why that three-decker was acceptable in that area. Today, you couldn't do that. And you well know, you know?
But, so, there was a three-family there. You're looking to do a two-family. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I mean, you're making efforts to come in the right direction. You're owner occupied, you're in the same neighborhood, you're vested in the neighborhood. Are you willing just to work on the design a little bit? Maybe the aesthetic look a little bit, or something like that?
I think I said from the beginning, James is a businessman in the community, but it's not, business is not that. He owns a package store.
There's sort of three fam- two three-family, two families in the neighborhood, so...
So in terms of, he went to people and asked for their help, and he got two people who built duplexes. They made him a proposal. You saw the earlier plans, and the concern with that one was that had a kitchen and a dining room, but it had the wind, and it went along that. Then he understood you wanted a plan at the front. So he went to the second person and asked that they present a plan. But in terms of, the choice he made was really to go with a smaller house, but in terms of dressing up the facade or whatever, that, I told you, these aren't plans that are on the shelf. These are things that they custom make depending on what you tell them to do. And so he's certainly willing to do that, because as you point out, he's invested in the neighborhood. Look there, he hasn't left the city. He's got a business, he's not leaving the city, so he doesn't leave Hawthorne Street.
Now, Chair? Now, Chair?
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. So my problems are two, like the facade and the three-bedroom apartments. I would like to see two-bedroom apartments. I think the city is just, you know, there's too much density. I think if you're going to go with two-bedroom apartments, I just think it's more in character with the neighborhood. That would be, that'd be my problem, than the three-bedroom apartments. You just gotta get families in there, and the city's trying to get away from big families because the school system's so expensive, you know? So I just feel like two-bedroom, two-bedroom, fix up the facade.
I take in my own opinion is that as a businessman, we need to work with the city. That is one thing we have to understand. The more people we have, the more economy will grow. So as a result of that, we need more three families in this city to enable people to come in and be able to grow the economy. Every day we cry, there is no money for the, there's no money for the school board, there's no money for the firemen. How do we grow the economy? By creating things that will grow this economy. By saying that two-family or two-bedroom, it does not make any difference.
Do you know?
Why? Because, because this is a neighborhood that we have a three-family. We are concising to the regulation of the city by creating a two-family in this building. So I, I mean, I don't understand why...
Jensen, do you have any children in the Limpob School, isn't it?
Yes.
You know how congested?
And the schools are overcrowded, aren't they? The schools are pretty overcrowded, aren't they?
Yeah, but the most family, even if they have two kids, they want school.
We are great, well...
I just asked the question. The schools are pretty crowded, aren't they? I could go to the Limpob School, he has a locker with three other people. He's a freshman at the Limpob.
Where this, this school's are overcrowded, so probably going to be there. I know people that are coming from outside of the city. There are still gonna be people living in the, in the same area. You understand what I'm saying? So, I mean...
I think they wanted to build a two-family. But he didn't, he didn't consider up and down, okay? Because of the concerns he had with the lot, okay?
With what?
With the lot, the topography of the lot, putting the house closer to the front, leaving an adequate sideline. So those are the concerns that he had. He went to two people who are builders. They each had a different approach. As far as the facade, uncertain. That can be dealt with, but in terms of getting direction, the direction he thought he had was to get the building facing to the front. And so that's what he's tried to do. In terms of the interior or the exterior, I'm certain, as I told you, these people, if you give them a drawing or a concept, they can make a plan. But that's, and if, in terms of being stick-built, the difference, I think, was one of cost and in terms of the financing of this. This isn't funded by any government agency, it can be funded by them. So it's private financing. He's gotta have the ability, obviously, to get the financing to show that he can pay it back, and he has to be able to track sufficient rents. I mean, that was the formula that, that he used in terms of how to develop the lot. But he didn't have the funds until recently, and, and he has prospered in the city because he's a businessman, and he's invested in the city. He lives on the street. So if, we're trying to get what we think would conform. It's an R2 district. It's a larger lot than most on the street. There are other two-families, but this would be a modern two-family, different than the ones that were there previously. And in terms of working within the parameters that the board would like, I think that's something he could do, and he appreciates, I think, getting the direction that you're giving. But this is not a person who's a developer, okay? It's a person who owned the house, lived in it. It was an old three-family. It burned. He didn't build it back. He couldn't, he wouldn't be here if he had built it back within a year. You'd have a three-family on the lot with, how many bedrooms were you said the...
Two each.
Yeah, two each.
So they went in six bedrooms, something like that. He didn't do that. He wants to come back and build a, a two-family now. We've heard different proposals.
Five ones and two bedrooms?
Excuse me?
Your...
My, pardon me?
The ones that burned down, the three-family, they were two-bedroom units?
Yeah, two-bedroom each.
So you have six units?
Six bedrooms.
Six bedrooms, and you're trying to go six bedrooms in the two-family, and that's, and that's, that's the issue? I mean, that's one issue that matters. It's like, it's like, eight people on a whole guy. The house is too small for three bedrooms.
So my concern is this. There are one single family in this, in this street that lives 20 people.
Four, four bedrooms.
Okay? There are single family in this same street that lives 20 people in a single family.
Oh, you're kinda making my argument that this means, because probably overcrowded now.
But I'm not here to make that argument. Yes, I wanna leave, but what I want is that I'm...
He's telling you what he's seeing on the street.
Right. And I, and I believe him. I believe him.
Yeah, people are living, you know...
I just can't go with it. I can go with a two. I have no problem with a two, but I'm not going with three-bedroom units, quite frankly. It's just too dense for that, for that area.
So, so we're trying again, get the picture into focus, so that, as I heard Mr. Wood, his concern is the front facade, and then I hear Mr. Cole and Mr. Wood, and his concern is the number of bedrooms. So I'm just trying to figure out what...
What does the rest of this house look like? What was the size? How many windows? Where was the back? Is there a deck?
The cash register rings every time you say one of these things, okay? So that...
If you can't spend the money to present your case, and I don't have any faith you can build a house.
No, well, I'm just saying to you this.
We're not asking for a lot.
If you're a developer, that's a cross of doing business. If you're a homeowner who lives in the street and you run a package store, every...
You don't get a break.
When you don't live in the house, in my mind, you become a developer. When you're building a house for profit. I live in the street. I do no one, if you have to be congested, you're forced to. I live in the same street.
So, I'm just saying to you that, so, what's in all, that's, these are who they are, okay? In terms of what they bring to the table. They want to put back what they once had there, once they once lived in, and they understand they can't have a three-family. So they're getting from you that you wanted it to face to the street, front on the street, that it be a two-family, that the facade be more elaborate, and that there not be more than two bedrooms. I'm just trying to ascertain what it is, because when they go back and you say, why can't they, I just, every time they go back, somebody says, okay, that'll be X, that'll be Y, that'll be Z.
No, we had such a... Well, tonight's rule was to get a, to get a building that, that we were comfortable with on the lot.
Well, we, then maybe we misunderstood. We understood that, because I will tell you, the people at the modular place said, what was wrong with the one that went this way? It was big, it had this and with that. And I said, they don't want it to go that way, they want it to face to the front. So based on that, that's what they did, all right? In terms of the interior, he, he's candid. He put down what they told him was the layout on the inside.
Exactly, because that's what we're told.
Right, that's, that's what he was told.
Right. That it has to face front.
Excuse me?
We're talking about Doug Hyde doing this?
Putting it in. The modular people drop it on the lot.
Okay.
And then you have to button it up.
But you have to understand that there could be no windows in the rest of this house, for all I know. I have to see the size. I wanna see the back. I wanna see if there's a deck. I wanna see where your landscaping is. I, I'm just not gonna sanction this without seeing the things.
Well, I thought that Mr. Reed's plan showed lawn and yard were almost the top, I'd say 35% of the lot. And that's what I'm saying to you, that in order to do that, that brought the house forward. He put a walkway. He put the top areas lawn and yard. He put a paved area for the three cars to park. We had to get access to the rear to park. And so I think there is that. And as James says, he lives on the street, he's not going away.
You're showing me landscaping?
No, I'm saying to you that the area, one of the reasons a smaller home was selected was to allow two things, parking at the rear and a sufficient area of green space. And I'm looking in, we're way below the maximum allowed of lot coverage. We're way below that, all right? We're way above the minimum required open space. So just looking and eyeballing this drawing that Mr. Reed did, I would say that the upper, at least 33% or 40% of the lot is lawn and yard. That's what it says. And we had to have the parking at the rear, so that put paving to get to those spaces. That also left us with making the driveway wider on one side. So it was balancing those things. So within that footprint, if you want a two-bedroom with a different facade, we can do that. If you want Mr. Reed to put trees along the back where the green area is, we can do that. But you couldn't do that if there wasn't sufficient area, and there is sufficient area. But you couldn't do that if there wasn't sufficient area, and there is sufficient area. So, it wasn't that we didn't, we paved the whole rear yard, it's at least a third or 40% green at the rear.
Most people that want to rent their, an apartment, normally it goes for three-bedroom apartments, because they want one for their son, one for their daughter, and a guest room. So, for two bedrooms, no?
Well, I'm not voting for it to be that one. I'm not voting for the look of this house. I'm not voting if I don't see the sides and the back, and if you have a deck, and you have to do those things, or if not, a go with it.
Well, we can go back and ask them, but I want to...
And it's too bad you didn't do this in the first place, now you've got to go back again.
But we brought, let's put this in some description. We brought a complete set of plans.
Yeah.
Okay? Of buildings that are being sold in the city of Lynn, each side 16 feet wide, $390,000, $420,000. They're out in Fairmont Ave. We're building a village out there, okay? And people are paying between $390,000 and $420,000 for what you see, that duplex, all right? That plan you brought didn't fit because it went too long this way. So, that plan was abandoned. We had another plan that was the modular. You then said, "Look, bring back a plan that runs on Hawthorne, fits on the..." So, that's what we thought we did. So, now you're saying, "Okay, we want it to be more decorative at the front," which is something that they can do, because I told you, they don't, they custom build. What you give them, they do. It says right on this plan, I think, "Not to be used for construction." It's not what people call working drawings, Mr. Cowan's for me, Dan's for me. They're not working drawings, it's okay? So, but they can do that. And then the second, as I understood it, was the two bedrooms, and now you're saying the landscaping. So, if that's what's in mind, and we go back to those people, or that, that, I'm certain they can do that, then it's a question for the board and for James to decide whether that works in the neighborhood.
Let me ask you a quick question. The last drawings that we looked at, I agree with everything you said. And as far as I'm concerned, you took steps towards what we asked for, you did. You absolutely did. Did the last drawings have a bedroom on the first floor? The drawings that were on the table last month, did they have a bed, they didn't have a bedroom on the first floor, did they?
Yes, they did.
I'm asking, it's a question.
I honestly don't remember.
I don't remember, I don't see them. I tried to look for them.
I didn't get that by rent, because I didn't like the layout of the house.
Right, I remember flipping through and just saying, because you were talking about taking 10 feet out of the house. And that was that conversation. And I said, "It's not going to happen with the layout of the floor."
Right. I'm really concerned about us to be weak also.
Right, that's...
I'm not. Now, we're just a week.
I never really looked at the bedrooms to be perfectly clear. I never really focused on that last month. I was looking at it more for the design of the house, to be honest with you. The design of the house still is just lacking a little bit. You did what we asked, I mean, you shrank it, you showed it to us the way we wanted to. It's just, it's very plain, and nobody can get a clear understanding of the whole thing. So, that, from my point of view, it's not so much what's going on inside right now, it's what's it look like outside first.
I heard what Mr. Wood said.
And, you know...
But if we go back, I just want to be certain that we tell them, this is what they want, and I'm certain they can design.
No, but we're not putting in two bedrooms. That's absolutely not acceptable. We're going to put in three either, so...
Do you want just a two-bedroom?
No.
You don't want two bedrooms?
No, I want three bedrooms, because the lot fits. It was a three-family house, you know? It was a three-family house.
So, this isn't open to discussion, this is a continued case, right?
It was a three-family house with a three-bedroom, with a two-bedroom, and now we are downsizing to a two-family with the same amount of things, and I don't see any reason why there should be any rejection.
Well, the fact is that they prefer to have two bedrooms, so the reason is that Mr. Cole and Mr. Ward said.
Yep.
And then, in terms of the, I don't know what the rest of the neighborhood is, I don't know, there are two families.
They are all three-bedroom, there are, there are, there are one bedroom...
I'm not questioning you, I'm saying I don't know, okay? And I'm certain, these people haven't been inside those homes. You may have, because you live on that, that street. But in terms of...
There are one, one, one family house in the neighborhood that's maybe 25 people.
Well, we know we've heard that.
But we don't go around, we don't go around snooping on people. All we just want to do is to build our lot, that's what it is.
All right. Any, are there any other, since this is a continued case, are there any questions here, if anyone has about this?
You mean, you're going to be...
No, I'm not. You've got to state your name, please.
Name and address.
And they look for answers. I live at 77, I have 73 Hawthorne, which is next to the empty lot right across from your house.
Are you a neighbor, yes?
I'm, yeah, I like these guys, they're very nice, our kids play together, I have no problem with them. I hope they don't hate me, but I'm going to oppose this. I feel like...
What address, can I just ask?
73 Hawthorne, right across from the empty lot, right across from your house. I just feel like, I feel like we've got 50 feet of frontage. Parking was already not awesome, it's kind of terrible at times. You know...
They've got the parking lot. They, 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 I'm just saying, I said, "50 feet of lot, they've got the parking."
I'm just saying...
That's who's in there, we are...
I'm just going to say that, I mean, is front, I don't know...
It's right on the plan.
Pardon me? Which, did I ask what address this is?
77.
It's right on the plan, right next door.
Are you serious? I thought that, well, it doesn't matter, I thought they needed 75 feet of frontage.
That's one of the things they come here for.
Is that?
There's no lot, very few lots in...
One of the things they come before the boards.
Because they don't have that.
That's right.
I agree, that's what I'm saying, they don't have, right?
That's one of the things they come here for.
In fairness, it's an existing lot.
It's a what?
It's an existing lot.
You can't do anything about it. You can't base things, I understand.
They're looking to actually shrink what was there.
I mean, I actually have a horse, I have a parking, I'm sorry, a fire hydrant right from my house. So, and it's part of the reason why it's kind of in trouble, when they encroach towards my spot, to my, toward my house, and my absolute only spot is probably illegal, because I lived 10 feet in that year, or that, so anyway. I just feel like there's a lot of people in the neighborhood already, and I don't know that having a multifamily in that location is necessarily best for the neighborhood. You've got a pocket of about four single families that are right there, and on the other side, you have duplexes and triples and whatever, and...
But there was a three-family there to begin with.
There was, but...
So, they're trying to help you.
I'm just saying.
There was, I understand it was, but as I understand it, they have gone beyond the time to just rebuild, that's why they had to come to you and ask permission.
Yes.
So, that's the point.
But would you abort your house if there was a three-family there?
That's a question, I don't know. I'm most likely not. I don't, I don't even know, we love the house, but I don't even know. But it wasn't there when you bought it, right? So, I have no reason to believe that there's not going to be...
Well, something's going on with the lot.
Absolutely. And what's the things that they can do without seeing us? You should look at that list, because care for what you wish for, because you don't might get it, right?
That's fine, that's fine. All I'm saying is, you know, why I ask my thing, my thing is, I prefer that I can move the house in the lot.
What would you like in the lot, nothing?
One family?
I would love nothing, but I...
Well, you can buy the lot then, if you want to have nothing and look out your window and...
We're not selling, how many people lives in this house?
All right, that's enough, that's enough.
So, we're saying this.
I understand.
Right in the building of the lot.
Excuse me, that's enough.
So, we could take a crap at a two-bedroom with a different front...
Is he willing to do a two-bedroom?
And showing landscaping? I just want to get with the parameters.
But is he willing, willing to do a two-bedroom?
I think we've got to go back, now, obviously, they can design it, Mr. Gisano knows, they told me they could design anything you want.
Well, I'm just saying what he said, he's not going to do a two-bedroom.
Who will listen, who will listen to our aunt, who is our best advisor, and that's all we're going to do. But we don't have a choice.
Originally, he came and asked me if he could put a three, I told him, "No, you can't put a..."
I would have put a six-family here, actually. If, if, if I'm opportune to do it, I'll put a six-family.
Keep it up, keep it up.
What are you doing? That is why I come to the board.
That's right.
But now you guys said, "Okay, it's going to be two-family or two-bedroom that I can put in there, that's fine." But I don't want anybody who is next to my lot coming up telling me when they have 20 people in, they have in the house. You understand what I mean?
That has nothing to do...
That doesn't matter to me.
That has nothing to do with this board.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, in that street, all the houses have three-bedroom each, even multi-family.
Exactly.
Whereas you have two.
But that was from a long time ago, and the city is too congested. That's the problem.
Cut two bedrooms, you know, it's not that bad. The house will have less wear and tear, you know, it will cost you a little less money to put closets in a third bedroom, so, you know, it's not all bad, you know? We're just, we're looking after the best interest of the city. I don't disagree, I'm just trying to make it not so bad.
Oh, isn't it, he disagrees, he's trying to understand what it is that he can do. He understood that he could not put back a three, that he knew. So, then it was a question of what kind of a two, and that's what got us to here today.
Exactly.
Mr. Johansson? All right, so you had your, I have your letter, and you just had your, your talk.
So, is, that's the wish of the board, is to dress up the front and show the landscaping at the rear, then we can go back to the people who draw up the house plans and ask them to prepare such a plan?
Just going to have a full basement?
I talked to Mr. Hyde about that. He thought that there was no reason why it couldn't, but he wouldn't know until he did the digging on the lot because of the topography. But, but he said to me, he thought it could.
Do the three-family have a full basement?
Yeah.
That should be no problem.
Yeah.
I'm going to read your letter.
We have a letter here from, to Miss Jean Curly, chairperson, regarding 77 Hawthorne Street. Dear Chairperson Curly, please be advised that I am in opposition to the construction of a two-family house at 77 Hawthorne Street, however, I am in favor of a single-family house only. Thank you in advance for your assistance in this matter. William Traha, Counselor Ward 2. So, the Ward Counselor is asking us to deny your petition and allow you to build a single-family on the lot.
You've got a single-family on the lot, it is. I mean...
We're just going to show you, we don't want density.
Yeah, we don't want density, but what was there was three families. That is the council, the council office, no...
What is the wish of the board? That's it?
The wish of the council.
It's closed.
I will make a motion to continue the case if they're willing to have the outside designed further. I personally, I cannot speak for everybody else, I personally have no issue with the amount of bedrooms in the place. I don't, I want to see the outside of the building on all sides, and I want to see, just kind of step it up a little bit. This is a very plain, and I know this is what these people spit out, this isn't what, I know you, you understand that. So, I'd like, you know, I think if you have them put a little effort into the facade, the exterior of the house, to show us all four sides, that's what I would like to see personally, so...
Well, I'm not voting for a three-family, so that's my vote, a three-bedroom. I guess I do have an issue with putting, basically, a house that has a, has a living room and three bedrooms in it, I don't consider that suitable housing. And so, I can support a two, but I'm not going to support more than two bedrooms per unit, so, if that's...
So, I'm not going to support a two-family?
Well, we've got to see it, I mean, you've got to...
So, you want to see the front, what they call the elevations, the side, the...
I'd prefer you go straight up with a two-family than a... Okay, actually, I mean, from my standpoint, I would prefer you did that, that would be sure, and you'd actually have more of a footprint, you could probably actually, I'm not telling you what to do, but you could probably have a lot better of an interior layout, in a, because you're going to have 30 feet, you know what I mean, you're going to have all that room on each floor compared to having two units on each floor. You're going to be able to have a better layout, maybe, maybe three bedrooms might fit better if you did that, I don't know, I can't see it, I can't speak for everybody else. I prefer you go down.
Well, he doesn't want it stacked, he just said he doesn't want it stacked.
So, I made, I, you prefer, my motion.
If you're prepared to redo this with two bedrooms, and the look of the house all around, and if you're going to have a deck or not, what is the wish of the board under those conditions?
I'm willing to look at it.
That doesn't mean a stay, that everyone's going to be in favor of that.
No, we want to see it. On the, on the, so we're going to continue it.
It's a continue.
It is a continue.
Well, we're willing to give you till...
I don't want to go back to the joint board again, I don't know what I'm doing. You're going, maybe you'll stupid, I don't want to go back to the joint board, I mean, you'll come over here now.
I understand.
That's what we're telling you.
If you've been listening to anyone.
Two bedrooms.
Okay.
We want to see all around the house, the windows, whatever you're going to have, a better-looking front.
Right.
What else do you want?
The landscaping.
Landscape.
Let me ask a question of the board, and just, I'm just, even devil's advocate, if they did decide to go vertical with a two-family, you're increasing the footprint of each apartment, would everybody still be opposed to the three bedrooms in that situation?
Yes, I would. I'm not doing three bedrooms. Are you willing to do that?
Two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Two-family.
All around.
Side by side.
And we want to see the front, the rear, the two sides, are you going to, you're going to have a deck?
I don't know what Mr. Gisano's got, he's not going to be old to this, or...
He's not doing that.[1504.12]
He doesn't want that, he said. He doesn't want it.
I can show you, beautiful one.
Nobody's gonna commit. Nobody's... No one here is gonna commit. I'm not gonna commit on anything until you change a lot of the design.
We already, we already agreed to that.
Listen, you know, listen to the idea. You wanna keep talking, you don't want me to talk, no. I'm not committing on anything, you gotta do a lot of changes to get my vote. And so, I'm only telling you right now, there's not gonna be any three... Just tell me right now, give me a little heads up. But I, and you're gonna do a lot of redesign.
Right. Well, you have to be two-bedroom.
It really doesn't fit. It's not a good fit, let me put it this way.
What is the wish of the board?
Um, does he have to sign a waiver, Mary?
Yes.
This is because they haven't acted within their served period of time, they want you to sign to continue.
I make the motion to continue with those stipulations.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. De Sono, seconded by Mr. Woods, to continue with the conditions that we just stated. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. De Sono?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hillman?
Yes, to continue.
And Mr. Cole?
Yes, to continue. When is the next meeting, Mary?
Uh, August 15th.
Do you want longer than that? Hold on, do you want longer than that same? You want two months? I'm asking, I'm saying, it doesn't have to be next month.
They're all about what they're representing to us.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be next month. You could take, they could take...
No, I, I think we can get it, but the more you're telling, the more they can add in.
Yeah.
No, I get the file tomorrow and say, "Give us a house that looks like this."
Yeah.
I just said, they, they have, you know, they have standard ones, but this is a custom built.
You doing the other, the third continued case there?
Yes, I am.
I can't. It shouldn't be long. They shouldn't.
I think I saw something here from Flint Mucci. I don't know why.
Yeah, you saw something else, not to do with the case.
Oh, really?
Has to do with the zoning application.
Oh, please, a pain in the ass. What do you say? What do you say?
I don't know, I think he just rewrote them a second.
Case number nine, seven, eight, six. Four seventeen, four twenty-three Boston Street. Petitioner AL Prime Energy Consultant Inc. By its attorney, Samuel A. Vitale.
This man was continuing, I know some of you had doubts, but I will report that on July the 11th, there was a meeting on the New World, Joe, the five-year-old president, which was one of them. Assistant City Solicitor George Monkopolis, Assistant City Solicitor James Lamanna, Attorney Dante, Attorney Mike Murphy, from the city. Jamie Marsh from Community Development, James Cowdell chaired the meeting from EDIC, Michael Donovan at EISD. There were representatives of Market Basket. There were representatives from AL Prime. And at that meeting, which was designed to solve the problem that you have and other problems, what they call the global solution, one was reached. The only problem with reaching it is they can't do what we need to get done until officially July 25th, which is beyond the date of this meeting. So, um, because I, again, have to protect my client's interest and because I read Shakespeare and I know there's many a slip between the cup and the lip, I don't doubt anybody saying to me what they said at that meeting. They reiterated that they would not impose, as I think the board was told, any unreasonable conditions on site plan review. We were talking in the neighborhood of a $400,000 traffic signal. Uh, there were other issues that related to the, as you noticed, $2 million worth of work going on down on Federal Street. And there were other stakeholders who were involved, including Market Basket. The representatives at that meeting indicated that they would come to agreement, they came to an agreement. It's just the mechanics of working it out. And so, based on that, I would think if the board continued this matter, that the likely outcome is it will be withdrawn because it will become moot because it will have already, by the time you meet again, have gone through site plan review.
Well, I have a letter dated July 18th. I am writing regarding the petition of four nineteen, four twenty-three Boston Street, which is being heard tonight by your honorable body. Recently, city officials and the owner of this property had a very productive meeting. I believe that a positive resolution is in the very near future. As a result of that meeting, I am respectfully requesting that your body act favorably towards a continuous request. Thank you for your consideration in this important matter, and this is from James Cowdell, Executive Director.
Yeah, you chaired the meeting.
What is the wish of the board?
Continue it.
Motion made by Mr. Cole, seconded by Mr. De Sono. To continue, please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to continue.
De Sono?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Yes, to continue.
Absolutely.
But I must say, I think down to the resolution, it was, you don't have to decide.
Yeah. Hopefully, we're not gonna hear this again.
You've been down here in February, there was a proposal dealing with the traffic on those sides. And there's a proposal about the lights and what the impact would be, all right? So, they've worked together. My, my people hired two traffic engineers. Market Basket had a traffic engineer. The three traffic engineers came together in terms of not only Federal Street, they're putting a road re- so, they're one end and at the back end, Marion Street, and we have a compact all the way down the middle and all the way back up. So they've arrived at a plan that makes the traffic circulate that achieves like three things, okay? First of all, it works for the city, okay? Secondly, it facilitates what Market Basket had in mind and it does not cause an impact on the other stakeholder of this deal, which is Old Neighborhood Brands, which is also in a particular area. Everybody's got like a different concern. Market Basket wants to get supermarket customers. AL Prime wants to get gas station customers. And Old Neighborhood's got these trucks that come in and out. And so, you're balancing all those interests. And they're all using the same streets that were designed, you know, how many years? So now they redesigned and they're going to have a traffic factor that ensures that people could get to the gas station, can get to the Market Basket, and the trucks, and deliver and bring goods out from Old Neighborhood. Won't be him, so it was a balancing of all those interests.
Is it gonna be on the road or down there?
No, well, if you look at the Market Basket property now, it's sort of at the traffic factor. You can see that there's a starting of another little road re- on there, passing on their way. But that wasn't, the issue was the direction of the, of the flow of traffic on the surface. North Federal, Marion, Water Hill. So, it's, it's sort of like when you deal with one, you just can't say, "Okay, this is gonna be this way without impacting that." So, there, we had, it was upstairs in room four oh two. They all came together, they all walked out to the resolution, and everybody at the agreed meaning said they agreed, okay? So then it was now how to have that put into effect. So the city did not, Mr. Donovan didn't change his position, but he agreed to assist in the process because the real part of the site plan review is whether you can get a building from it. My people wanna build that facility that the council had approved. And everybody at the meeting said, like you did, they, they wanna see it built. But it's how to do it and not adversely impact other stakeholders. They arrived at a solution. So, but given the timetable that they had, it wouldn't really kick in till like July 25th. And Mr. Donovan said, the earliest that the permit could issue may be July 26th. Well, that's after today, so...
Is this from the...
Hmm?
Yeah, the first thing is they changed Marion Street to the Iberian. Because they've taken off that one, they go big curve.
Right. Well, that, no, that's, they've taken all of that into account. The city's in the process of seeking funding, which everybody wants because they don't wanna spend their own $2 million. That funding's coming from the state. But the state has to look at, not the interest of any one individual, but the overall area to allow the grids to, to go through. And so, they, they are saying, everybody's gonna be on the same page, we're not gonna provide the funding. So, the incentive is to get the funding, to make it work for everybody. And to get the funding if they can, because the government's got an interest in seeing the economic development of the city of Lynn, and the Market Basket certainly helps do that. But you can't do it at the expense of the existing business, whether it's Old Neighborhood or AL or not.
Okay, next case.
Thank you.
Case number nine, seven, nine, one, thirty-four, thirty-eight Spencer Street. Old Mill Realty Investors by Representative Thomas C. Demakis. Decision on a petition to allow demolition of existing structure authorized for office business retail use and to construct in its place a building to be used for clinical office business retail uses on a parcel having less than the minimum required dimensions. To allow on an existing non-conforming lot the use and reconstruction on a slightly reduced footprint of an existing non-conforming structure in zoning District R4 that has less than required parking lot area, frontage, and setbacks, and which exceeds the maximum building area for the lot and to allow such reconstructed structure to be used for a clinic office business retail use.
Good evening. And my apologies, Madam Chairwoman. When I wrote the cover letter, I went to the city's website, which told me that Mr. Cole was the chairman of the Board of Appeals, so that's why I addressed it that way.
I thought you did that because originally, he was the chairman when this came around years ago.
No, it wasn't a mistake. I, I think, maybe it was. Anyway, it came around years ago. It was almost the exact same petition years ago, and you granted it years ago. The only difference between that one from 2010 and this one is because now the plan is to put a medical office in there with a couple of doctors and a nurse. I added, I added to the uses clinic. Old Mill Realty Investors, the principal of that enterprise is my cousin, the other Tom Demakis. I'm the good-looking Tom Demakis, he's the other one.
I'm special.
And he owns Old Neighborhood Foods, and I'm sure all of you know that he's, he's done a terrific job for the city of Lynn, and he's done a terrific job in that neighborhood. You know, he's bought three or four other properties on Spencer Street and completely renovated them.
Yes, exactly.
Yes. You know, he, he's bought a couple, he's bought a property of Marion Street, that whole neighborhood around his factory. And, um, so this, uh, this is the old Venice Cafe. You know, we, I gave you the pictures. I'm sure you guys are familiar with it anyway. It's just a real disaster. And the plan is to knock it down, have to start over again to build this medical office building. Um, the, it, it's gonna be on a slightly reduced footprint from the old Venice Cafe, but because the lot is small, even though we're slightly reducing the footprint, it violates just about every dimensional requirement of the zoning ordinance. And there's no parking. There's no legal parking because the building takes up most of the lot. However, the building abuts the old B&amp;M Railroad right away. And when the Venice Cafe was in operation, they parked cars on that. The B&amp;M Railroad, which is now the MBTA, nobody objected. So our plan is to park cars on the railroad right away. And if anybody objects, it's not a big deal anyway because Counsel Walsh, who's in favor of this, informs me that during the day, which is when people would be occupying the building, there's not a parking problem on Spencer Street. So he thinks it's on-street parking anyway. And my cousin owns, as we said, I, I should've known exactly how many, but at least three or four other properties on Spencer Street, a couple of which have ample parking, so that he could have the employees of the medical office building park on one of his other properties. It didn't, we're just be talking about parking for the patients. That's about all, that's about all I have. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Why isn't it staked?
Excuse me?
Why isn't the property staked?
Because it's, um, it's, um, the same footprint except a little smaller, so it's impossible to stake inside the building, you know what I'm saying? It's just, it's virtually the identical footprint. It might, a couple of walls might come in a little bit, a couple of foot or two. But with the building already being there, you can't stake it, especially since we're shrinking it, not expanding.
When I look at this, I can't tell if this is long ways or sideways.
Well, yeah, I, I also submitted, Mrs. Curly, an as-built plan, which unfortunately is, uh, is a little shrunken. But Spencer Street, so when you're looking at what you're looking at...
Well, see, it doesn't tell me where Spencer Street is.
I know, I know, that architect, I'll tell you, wait till I get my hands on him. But that's Spencer Street at the bottom.
Is this Spencer Street here?
Yes, yes.
So this goes lengthwise?
Yes.
Wait, which one's, which one, where Spencer is?
Spencer's at the bottom right there.
It is written, that's...
It's not written.
Because when you, when you're there and you look at it, it doesn't look like there's this much depth.
There is. There is. This, see, I, again, I have the existing conditions plan, and this is the existing building. And it's the same shape.
What is the depth of the lot?
The depth of the lot, I have a, um, get on your, I've got it on something else here. The depth of the lot, Mr. Kalman, um, on the right side, as you're looking at the land from Spencer Street, as you're looking at the lot from Spencer Street, it's eighty-four, eighty-four feet. And on the left side, it's seventy-two, seventy-three feet. And then the front, the frontage on Spencer Street is thirty-nine. Yeah, sure, I didn't submit that in the package.
Yeah, just, do you have any, ever a ballpark figure? What, what, um, you'll be spending for that building down there?
I didn't ask, I don't know. Just curious.
It won't be cheap.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's... For what they're building and for the intended use, I'm sure it won't be. I'm sure it'll be a, a nice investment over what's there now.
That must've been some bar.
I never paid you that much.
I couldn't even imagine that was a bar.
You should ask, you should ask anybody, Sally, if he ever represented them.
I heard it was a wild and crazy place, but I never went there.
It was.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't want to...
Yeah, in my package.
It was? No, you got a different one, Mr. Cole, I think.
I got the thing and I, I get it on the email and the copy.
You know, I don't wanna put too many plans in there, Mr. Kalman, but you're welcome to...
You can have it all.
I have an exist, I have a different plan in the package, different survey from 2017. This is an older one.
That's this one here?
Yeah, I had that in the package. This one's had, had the advantage of being more readable, which when you get to be my age and Mr. Kalman's age, that's a big difference.
So it looks like it'll be, uh, you know, quite a facility to get x-ray and all work and... Let's not see how long it's doing.
Well, I think it's closets.
No, but it's the meathead part. You see the hat on the, on the after the pros could read here.
Um, I'd be lying if I told you I knew, but I think maybe, maybe they might sell like, um, you know, braces and stuff like that, you know?
And this is only, is a full basement?
Yes, it's a single-story building, it's a full basement.
I see an easement.
No, no public access to the basement though, except...
Yeah. What's the easement line?
Well, which side are you looking on, right or left?
Well, I'm looking on the right. Just so I can see the easement.
Yeah, there's a right-of-way, the, the house next door and, um, and this property share, share right-of-way, like eight feet wide, four feet on this property. On either side of the property.
That'll be a nice facility there.
Yes. Beautiful.
Yep. I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for this. Would you just speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed.
We have a letter.
I'm gonna give it to you. You got one too? Same letter?
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Jean Curly, Chairperson, regarding thirty-four, thirty-eight Spencer Street. Dear Chairperson Curly, please be advised that I am in favor. The above mentioned, uh, mentioned petition to allow the demolition of an existing structure authorized for office business retail use and to construct in its place a building to be used for clinical office business retail uses on a parcel having less than the minimum required dimension. I spoke to many of the neighbors and they are in support of said petition. This new construction will eliminate the blight which has been there for many years and enhance this neighborhood with a new building. Thank you in advance for your assistance in the matter. John F. Walsh, Jr., Counsel of Ward Seven.
The petition should be granted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kalman, seconded by Mr. Cole to grant. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes, Frank.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Kalman?
Yes, to bring.
Mr. Curly?
Yes, to grant. You're welcome. Case number nine, seven, nine, one, Fifteen Wells Place. Petitioner Rod Rivera. To allow a fourteen-by-sixteen two-story addition to an existing non-conforming single-family structure located in zoning District R1, set back less than fifteen feet from the rear of the lot. Please give your names and addresses to the secretary.
I'm Rod Rivera, search and supply designer, and the owner. Look here, I'm a tenant.
And what do you wanna do?
Just wanna, uh, build a bedroom. A two-level bedroom. In other words, the first floor will have an active bedroom and the second floor will have, um, same footprint as the first floor. We'll have another bedroom.
What, what do they have now?
In terms...
Of bedrooms?
Um, the first floor, um, is a one-bedroom, so this would be the second bedroom for that first floor. The second floor has three bedrooms, Um, the first floor, um, is a one-bedroom, so this would be the second bedroom for that first floor. The second floor has three bedrooms, so this would be the fourth bedroom for the second floor and attic, um, combined.
So you want six bedrooms, right?
Well, this is a two-family house.
Yeah, I was shocked when I saw that.
So now in this attic, you have people living up there?
Not sadly right now.
I don't know, what I'm saying, you proposed to have people living up there.
Well, the existing house has those bedrooms already.
On the third floor?
On the third floor, which is part of the second floor.
Does it have two needs of acres?
And, um, the second floor does have the, the third floor does not, but the second floor and the third, well, the attic is part of the second, it would be, um, combined.
Combined one family.
No, it would be combined two families. The first, the second floor and attic are together.
I'm talking about the upper floor. The upper floor has two levels, right?
The second floor has...
That's right.
Right.
But that's one family.
That's one family, right. With these, why, they've made this out...
Now, do you have, uh, does that have a stairway out of, out of up there?
A little bit.
Way to get out on the attic. Another stairway.
It does not.
Oh.
It's called a stair, it's a stair.
So if that stairway was on fire, they'd hit trap, you can't get out. There's no outside.
But Cole says, Cole, Cole says that as long as you have one, about five point seven square feet of glass, that's your second meter of vigress. The code says that as long as you have a...
Do you have that on you?
I, I don't, no, no, I don't.
See, you're saying something that we don't know.
No, I understand. Well, I put this right here.
No, I'm trying to get at, I'm not in favor of, you know, standing like that, never have been in a other world, but you've got to have a place of refuge to get out. And if you don't have a place of refuge, that the, uh, people can come to fire and if something's mistaken people, that's hard for them. And, and you could have, have a dollar plan. So you've got to come up with something, you know, means a place of refuge or some way to go out if you can't get down that stairway. I don't care what the glass says or the fireman's window or whatever, doesn't mean anything. People don't like breaking glass unless they go on a chair or a, a hammer or whatever.
So there are two bedrooms in the fifth carport? So, but looking, so they both only have like one window, huh?
Correct.
Can they stand up?
Well, you don't have anything staked either. There's nothing staked there.
No.
And it, and it has to be staked. And who, who, who made these plans you have?
They hired this gentleman, this architect.
Well, where's, where's this architect's stamp?
It's right there.
You didn't see the full set?
Well, I, I don't have that.
I don't have it either.
Do you have that? I don't have that.
I submitted, I submitted.
Well, we didn't get it. My, my packet has something else entirely.
I have pieces of the, um, of each floor. So do you have the full packet right there?
Is it in the files?
The files are a little mixed up. They get the wrong, that's my problem here. Like, case number this, but it's belongs to somebody else.
How many, how many bedrooms are in the condition? Is it just one bedroom?
Just one extra bedroom.
One, on the first floor?
The first floor.
Two-story addition, what's on the second floor?
I love the bedroom.
So two bedrooms?
Yes.
So you're turning the house from...
But this is really nine seven nine one.
First floor has, um, exists in one bedroom, so it's going to be two bedrooms on the first floor, and on the second floor it's going to be, uh, so both bedrooms.
So the house is a two-family?
Yes.
What's it, single-family?
It's, it's a two-family.
Fifteen Wells Place.
Yes.
It's the, um, the advertising, I mean, which says, non-conforming, single-family structure. Is that a problem with the advertisement?
The, the, the record card, that's what I think.
But our, our application is a single-family.
No, yeah, but that's why I put this, because this says it's a two-family, just, you know, contrast of the pressure.
Well, I said I was surprised to see that listed, which doesn't mean it's, doesn't mean it's an actual two. I mean, it could, could be a legal one.
Do you have any parking plan? You have any landscaping?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't have a landscaping, but, uh, we can produce a landscape, we can produce a park. Parks exist, no, we don't.
I know that, but I don't see it.
You've got to have a parking plan in the petition you bring in there. We can't imagine where it is.
I'm saying the two, though, like the earlier takes, I just don't like the density of the two, that speaks very narrow, and, uh, you know, I just don't like making vehicles, you know, things like that. Was there ever another building?
I, I have to talk to you because they'd be the one.
No, that's part of this property, so. Yeah, let's do a little, yeah, it's just that, that empty box. Yes. That belongs to this single-family property, yeah.
Is the house vacant now?
Well, it's under, it's still under, um, construction, because originally we were just going to remodel the, the units.
Yeah.
And then we came up with the idea of adding another, uh, bedroom.
Yeah, because...
And we were, if, if the setback met the requirement, we wouldn't be here right now.
Right. Although I'll tell you, um, it's interesting. Because even the listing here, this is, the listing says that there were two units, but eight, eight rooms and four bedrooms. So there are currently four bedrooms, but they have one of the first. Did you, when you bought this, um, you bought it in last August, right?
Yep.
From the, from Wells Fargo Bank?
Yep.
For two twenty-four and a half. I mean, did they, did they sell it as a two-family?
Yeah, they said it, it's a one.
Because I, I don't think, I, I think before we do anything, we've got to figure out the legality.
Yeah, yeah, is it a single, red, and a one or a couple? That's where the official rank is. It isn't, it isn't the accessory.
And here, here's the, here's the thing, right? Who, who wrote the ad for the newspaper? Normally, the building department writes it. So right now, the building department is saying you have a legal, single-family house.
That could be a type error or a little mistake on it.
They have the official rank of the, the, uh, accessory, though.
Are you paying taxes on a two-family?
Well, we just bought it, so it's...
Well, what, did you buy it as a two-family?
As a two-family. And there were two, and there were two meters in it.
They probably pay the taxes on it.
Somebody that has the, um, accessory.
Should be free or accessory, someone. Well, I'll be there, I know it's another good change. Right, but only if you have a common hallway, if you have a common area.
Right, a common area.
Um, just the basement. I'm saying, but when the house was bought, there was two meters and that was it. I mean, so, I mean, today we have to do that, that's what we're doing now. I'm just telling you, I wouldn't want to see you spend any money, I wouldn't, I'd guess we'd be resolvable, but I wouldn't be able to support two more bedrooms in that small room. I wouldn't want to, I'm just being, I probably, because I wouldn't want to see you go spend more money on the plan, go... It's a house that he's going to live in, so that's, yes.
This one's of nine seven nine one, but this should be, that should be, um, nine seven nine one.
Isn't there, isn't there some stipulation about the amount of space you can, you can use on a, on a, on a third floor?
I know, but it's not like that.
On a twenty-house building.
Certain, certain areas is, um, like certain towns, the way they, they...
No, just talking about the, not about town.
No, I, I understand, but I'm saying, the state, the state, well, the state, um, in certain areas, what they do is, depends on square footage, you use fifty percent of the square footage of that whole entire house. Could be used as a habitable space of attic.
Fifty percent of space?
Of the whole entire space. So in other words, if you have a house that has two thousand square feet, you only can make the attic no more than a thousand square feet.
You have to have a chain rule.
Exactly.
If you have a low pitch...
So your, your lower's, your lower's pitch has to be minimum five feet, and the, and the, uh, the lowers of the ceiling would be six foot eight. That's a habitable space.
So basically, you re-haven't announced this one time.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairwoman, I just have, I would suggest, um, what I, we, we don't always do it, but I would suggest we have the opportunity to visit the property and take a look at it. I would, I would like to take a site visit on this. And number two, for, for these people, before we go any further, we send a letter to, to Mike and determine if it's, is it a legal single or a, or a...
I think that's an open question.
Or a two-family. I think we need a, we need to get daddy into it, so.
Because if it's a legal single, then I think we run the risk of making it a legal two-family. I'm waiting on it.
If you were to ask to jump it up from a single to a two, you wouldn't ask for that permission. Well, what are you saying?
Is there any depression in the two, so, in fairness to them?
Yeah, I know, but, but in the official ledger at the ISD, it's like when you say, what is it there, that's right.
Yeah, we've got to find out.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
The bank gave you a mortgage for two-family?
Yes.
And nobody checked it? I mean, the bank, nobody checked it?
Well, they would normally check the assessor's records.
Did you have, yeah, or an attorney? I don't know.
But if it was assessed, it'd be paying taxes.
It is assessed as a two-family. The assessors have it, they're paying taxes on it.
Which I asked, but he said that since they just bought it, they don't know what they're paying.
I just looked it up on the, um...
Okay.
No, no, the city, the, yeah.
City, yeah, I just looked it up, um...
He just looked it up on his phone.
Yeah, it's right here. On the city's website, they have it as a two-family. That's the, uh, the city of Williams.
It just doesn't appear to be a legal two-family, but we have to check it out.
That's the question.
But he's got, he's got on the device, is that the assessor?
The assessors have it as a two-family.
Yeah, but I know that.
Yeah.
They do that when they want food, so they get the taxes on it.
But the question weighs either as one family or two-family, that's a different question. I agree.
Well, um, I'll make a motion to table it until August, yeah, continue until August fifteenth, a month from now.
Should we see if there's anyone here for or against? Should we continue this?
Oh, yeah, we can, I guess so, yeah, yeah, just in case. Why don't you do that?
Any other questions from the board? Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Continue it till August fifteenth. Two, two issues. One is that we send a letter to ISD requesting, um, um, if the status of this property is a single or a two-family. And I, like I said, I personally would like, because it's under construction, it'd be a good opportunity. I would personally like that, if you worked with Mary about setting up a time, if anyone else wants to, if not, that's fine, but...
To go in the property?
To go, I want to go in and view it, yeah. Go in.
We all went there to look around it, but...
Yeah.
Second motion.
Motion made by Mr. Cole, seconded by Mr. Kalman, to continue and hopefully set a date that we can all go inside and, and look around. What is the wish of the board?
Oh, please, you have a motion to second.
Oh, yeah, motion to second, right. That would help.
Cole?
Hmm?
Cole?
We're waiting for a motion to second.
We do.
Mr. Kalman, good.
Motion made by Mr. Cole, seconded by Mr. Kalman. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes, to me.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
That's a question. So at this time, you want, I mean, on the fifteenth, you want us to bring us the landscape and, and the parking?
And we, we're going to find out whether this is a legal two-family or not, and before that date, we're hoping that you can set up a time that we can go in and take a look at what we're talking about here.
And then, and then whatever else you might think, you need, I get ready.
Set with this one?
You sure? All right. Normally, we don't, but we're going to get it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
These things are all mixed up, she had all the wrong numbers, all the wrong stuff is in there. Yeah, that's why I've been fiddling around here, I don't know what I'm doing. Case number nine seven nine three thirteen seventeen Molton Street, petitioner John B. Souza, represented, represented by attorney Samuel Vitale. Decision on a petition to allow the reconfiguration of a lots with non-conforming residential dwellings thereon in R4 apartment district. Lot A with an existing non-conforming three-family fifteen seventeen, on a lot with less than the required area, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three square feet of frontage forty feet, and parking spaces three. Lot B with an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, number thirteen, on a lot with less than the required area, three thousand forty-nine square feet, and frontage accessed to Molton Street by driveway easement, parking stalls less than five feet from the property line.
I think I can put it in some of the terms, but we have to do it that way. Since the nineteen twenties, uh, as the city director indicates, there's been a three-family on the same lot with a single family. One address was fifteen seventeen Molton, the other was thirteen. There was also, uh, at the top, next to the single family, another single family, was, is accessed by a right-of-way off Washington Street.
Where?
Excuse me?
So there's another single family, where?
On an adjoining lot. I'm going to show you that plan in a minute. Um, so what we're trying to do is three things. Carry out the wish of the city council and the planning board, uh, create parking where there was none, and get access, lawful access to the single family. So let me start by showing you how this came about. The single family's at the top of this sort of L-shaped lot, and that single family was adjoining by a single family that burned. They were on, shown on a plan, uh, that the city, that the planning board ultimately approved, uh, and the planning board approved such a plan, uh, but this was the plan the planning board approved in nineteen ninety-three. And it shows lots seven B and seven A, it shows the single family at the top, it shows the three-family down below, fronting on Molton Street. So the single family has no frontage, and in fact, it has really no lawful access, because if these two buildings were in different ownership, the guy at the front would say, hey, wait a minute, you need to get permission to cross over to the back. The second part of this was that the deed from the city followed the recommendation of the city council, and the city council voted, uh, in, in nineteen ninety-three, and this is the city council vote that I'm going to show you and read from, it says that the land, uh, is made subject to the provisions of the zone ordinance of the city, and with the stipulation that it be subdivided equally, and one half of the property be sold to Joseph and John Souza, uh, and that the property be used for landscaping or the parking of registered, uh, non-commercial vehicles. Only one problem. How do you get to it, okay? So there was a house that was on this back lot, it burned, the city took the property. The city then had a vote of the city council, and they gave a deed that says the same thing. Conveyance is made with the stipulation that the lot be subdivided equally, one half of the property be sold to John and Joseph Souza, and the property be used for landscaping and parking. So when John came and said what they wanted to do, I said, yeah, but how do you get there? And then he actually found the logic. There's an existing right-of-way. This area had all rights-of-way. So the gift of that lot that used to be at the top, there was a right-of-way that came in, but it didn't extend, you follow me, to the next lot. So when they divided it, they gave one half to one person, not John. The half they gave John, you can't really get to, but we found there was an existing right-of-way to the right, which is shown on Mr. Reed's plan. So if we use the existing right-of-way, that accesses this back lot, okay?
This is what the top.
Right. Well, you can see them, seven A, seven B, and the floor is a plan, but you can access, there's an existing right-of-way. Yeah, that's, that's an existing right-of-way.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but it's a house.
But when you, the problem...
You're looking for an easement to turn into that.
Exactly right, because even though it's an existing eight-foot right-of-way, you can't turn a car, right? Right. So you had to deal with the property owners there and the, and the adjoining property, both of whom were in agreement.
Uh, they're in agreement?
Yes.
You have this easement?
Right. And I'll tell you why they're in agreement, okay? The three-family has no parking now, all right? So I said to John, oh, we're going to create parking for the one family. He said, no, there's no parking for the three-family. So now the question was, even though it adjoins the single-family lot, we want to use it for the three-family. So when we laid out that the most we could get on the land that the city had to be used for, said for parking, were three spaces, but they were within two and a half feet, not five feet. So that's one of the requests, parking within...
So there's two proposed easements, is this here and this one?
Right. And we're going to create an easement. Now, the question is, how do we get, people are presently parking at the single family, but they just drive in, follow me, there's no lawful right to pass over, so we created our right-of-way.
This is a good plan for that.
Right. So now we've got a way to get, now you can park two cars at the single family, and where there was no parking for the three, park three. They each have their own access, okay? Um, and the single family was landlocked.
Right.
But, but now we will have... But, but now we will have a right-of-way to Molton Street.
Yeah, but remember, I don't get that, I say free.
So right now, this is the single family.
Yes.
And they're using that lot.
No, no.
That, that lot was conveyed to be used for parking. I'm just saying.
But you can't get to it.
Well, well, there's a little hole in there.
Right now.
Right.
Yes.
I drove down here, couldn't even, I didn't realize that this was connected, it's a fence all the way, right? There's no access there now.
No, if you look, yeah.
Yeah, but they can, they create an easement.
Right.
This is.
Two different easements, right?
Yeah, this is a big one.
Yeah, so you can turn in and turn out.
So this car, they actually, they do it like that. Yeah, instead of having this car move out, you could just do that.
So why, why is this, why is this house here in favor of this?
Because with, the three-family people are parking on the street.
Right.
And now, they're gonna take three of them off, and they assign one space to each of the units in the three-family.
He has no parking.
Yeah, she, yeah, but she's going to get three cars off the street, it's just.
Right, that's, that's an advantage.
Especially for home.
It's brutal. Right.
Oh, I know, then, then it always does.
Oh, my God. So the, the city's objective, I was trying to work things out, was a good one, right? We're just trying to, so if you were to approve this.
If everyone could be neighborly like that, you'd be, you know, maybe a better thing for the city.
Everybody wins, though, I'm just kidding.
Well, so the little girl, what a lady.
She could pay her life, and even add more spaces if she, she comes and finds a boy.
Whoever's living, yeah, loses their little pool.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, but she has class on the other side with the debt. There is, um, one family.
We still got the beaches.
But, so what we're trying to do is carry out the wish of the city council that be used for parking, make it lawful parking, get access. As I said, John said, well, why can't, because I said, how are we gonna get there? And then he said, but there's this existing, then we, then we ask the people, can we make the turn? Okay, so now we've got like half the problem solved. Now we wanna keep the, the single-family with lawful access and a drive, and have them park. And so we came up with this plan.
Was that your ringstone?
It wasn't my ringstone.
Why do you got that T-shirt on?
No, so, so then, if you were to approve this, we would have to go back to the planning board, it's already approved. Uh, I showed them the deed, I showed them the, the, the vote and the ANR, that, that they, they'd have to now modify that, what they call approval not required. But they couldn't do it without your help.
I know.
Little problems.
No, 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 no. No, I'm not gonna build anything, no.
No, we're gonna keep the existing.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, no.
It's amazing, though, that, that house there had the access from Boston Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I could show you the plan from nineteen oh seven. Yeah, it had, there was a right-of-way from Boston Street that reached in, and that, that, that was called lot seven A on Molton Street. And it was an old plan, but when the, it did, when they divided the lot, it left this one like an island. Because another gentleman owns this half.
Yeah, but this and that's still viable.
For him, but not, but not, it doesn't cross through.
But I'm saying, there's no registered.
No, yeah, no. It's not.
So every right-of-way is still in?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, you know, between that one and the next one, too, it can have access without.
Yeah.
It's a free more parking, yeah.
Yeah, this is this, that's our Washington.
That's what, this house here.
Yeah, I think it would be, for one of the, it gives up for one of the.
How many lots are here? How many more houses on the street, like three lots there?
Yes, yeah, I think, yeah, three more, three more, actually, I think it's.
Is that fenced up also, I'm just curious, is that, is that fence, or just?
No, well, they, yeah, people have to have fence.
You know, I think it's a good plan. However, when I went there, for something that's supposed to be for parking or landscaping, the weeds were so high, they were up to my knees. I couldn't see a damn thing, I had to look through the cracks of a fence to see that there was a swimming pool.
Actually, yesterday, they just tore down the whole back fence for the green fence.
Yeah, but that's not good enough, that's, that's yesterday or today.
Oh, this is from the lawn.
I'm not there yesterday or today.
This is a, I'm sorry, I was a little, I was a little busy, I was, I was so busy. I, I know, you're right, I should've hit that sooner.
Well, I mean, if, if I'm supposed to go there and look and see what you wanna do, I don't wanna have to look through a crack in a fence, because I can't get there. And when I do.
You didn't get pitch, that's the good news.
What?
He kept, he was growing more and more.
That's why I delayed, because I did a chop.
Son, this is what happened, wound up going to get a fair.
I know, but those weeds didn't get there overnight.
I know, I.
That stuff has been there for weeks and weeks and weeks.
Absolutely, I understand. I tried, I tried, I tried to keep it.
You got a lot top, yeah. You got a lot top? Well, it's fixed to weeds. But I'm gonna make sure I put some perennials back, because I love perennials.
I don't know how to get my.
Say that again, Mrs. Crowell, you hear what he said?
What?
I said, I'll make sure I put some perennials along, they're one family, because I love perennials. I wish my tenants would take care of my perennials when I put after.
Your house looks very nice.
I know, I.
It's kept up beautifully, it's painted beautifully, your grounds are beautiful, I see them every day when I'm walking the dogs.
So what we're gonna do is have you approve it, so we can go to the planning board and get the, get the easements recovered.
Yeah, it was around the corner.
They brought, they brought all the wood back, uh, all the natural black wall, the original doors are still there, very pretty. Crest Street, man, uh, yeah, twenty-two rooms that house, it's beautiful. Well, you, she, she has a gorgeous home, I love her home. I said, you have a gorgeous home, I love your home.
Anyone, anything else, other questions from the board?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those in favor. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
I'll second, uh, Mr. Wood.
Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Wood. Please call the roll.
Mr. Menendez?
Yes, Grant.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, Grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, Grant.
Mrs. Crowell?
Yes, Grant. You're welcome.
This is the best of us, and the names are really appreciated. Thank you so much, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.